Actually, we can just go ahead and get started if you guys want with the Pledge of Allegiance. You call the meeting to order and everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So let's just give a few minutes for folks to join and then I'll just make a couple of very short introductory comments in terms of the structure of tonight. Okay, it looks like the numbers are holding, so I'll just go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the finalist interviews for the superintendent role, Ducksbury Public Schools. We have two candidates interviewing with us tonight. This planned structure for each is that there'll be 60 minutes for Q and A and then 15 minutes for the candidates' questions and closing statements. Then the school committee will have a break in between the candidates. The first candidate starts at 5:05 and the second candidate will start at 6:45. Because we want to make sure that these are equal opportunities for presentation, I will be a little bit strict about timekeeping. And I am going to, I've set, I've made little notes for myself when I need to kind of just make a comment about, you know, halfway through 15 minutes, five minutes, and then I'll do a five minute for the 15 minute session at the end. And then, and we have, you are, we are permitted to ask, if in an answer you want to seek a clarification of an answer, you can ask clarifying question. But let's be mindful of making sure that we get through all of our questions so that we get the full robust answers. Welcome, Dr. Klingerman. I was just going through some of the, oh, did she disappear again?
Yeah, we put her into the attendee, so we'll bring her back in at 5:05.
Oh, okay, alright, okay. So, so anyway, so I just went through that, I'll be keeping time and we've got the 60 minutes for Q and A and the 15 minutes for the candidate to ask questions and, and do a kind of a closing statement. And if anybody has questions, just, you know, let me know as we go. Okay. Be very accurate on our timekeeping, it's a lot of pressure. Okay. It is 5:05, we are ready. Hi, Dr. Klingerman.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
We, I just gave a little bit of an introductory to the format for the evening with the 60 minutes for Q and A and 15 minutes for any questions you have or closing statement. And I'll be keeping pretty strict time to keep everyone on track and make sure that we're covering everything, so please, you know, pay attention, I'll take care of the time, so just, and give you guys a heads up. But, and I also have the opportunity to lead the charge, if that's okay. I'd like to ask, why did you apply for this job? And given what you know about Ducksbury and our school system, why do you feel that you're the best candidate for this position?
All right, so we'll get right into it. So thank you for, thanks for the opportunity to be able to share a little bit about myself to start things off this evening. So I'm sure all of you and many people listening have reviewed my resume, but just to go over some of the highlights. I've been working for children for over 26 years, 24 of those years, years have been in the public school setting. I started off my career working in a residential facility for teenage boys with emotional and behavioral disorders. And then I switched over to the public school setting where I served as a special education teacher for a number of years, and then I spent the next 14 years serving as an elementary school principal. Most recently, I've served here in Ducksbury as the assistant superintendent, and then this year as the interim superintendent. So during that time, I've always challenged myself while serving as a school administrator and found ways to stay current and innovative. First by completing my doctorate, then by teaching graduate courses for educators and pedagogy and instruction. I've spent time working for the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and served as one of the co-authors for the guidebook for inclusive practices. Been on the state principals advisory cabinet. I've been on the Board of Directors for MasQ, which is an organization, a leading organization in the state that focuses on professional development and innovative practices for teachers and includes a lot of technology integration. I've most recently been serving as a co-facilitator on the Assistant Superintendent's Leadership Seminar through the Massachusetts School Superintendents Association, so I've had some opportunities at the state level to help transition administrators into the central office role. I'm also a parent with two children. Both of them are now in high school, so I've had the experience of preschool all the way up to high school. One of my kids is a sophomore and one is a senior. And so I think that being a parent provides me with an important perspective. One of the most important roles as a superintendent, I believe, is listening and sometimes unfortunately having difficult conversations. So I always go into those conversations empathetic, knowing that parents are coming to me because they believe they are looking out for their students' best interests. And, and I do this work because I care about children. And so why did I apply for this position and why am I interested? Given what I know about Ducksbury, which is a lot, I feel as though I'm the best candidate for this important position because my experience serving as the assistant superintendent here has allowed me a keen insight into the inner workings of of central office, as well as the school district and the Ducksbury community as a whole. So prior to this year, I was fortunate to partner with a superintendent that involved me in all aspects of the superintendency. I feel as though I was in a partnership role where I attended all meetings, decision-making, including the budget process, contract negotiations and all personnel and legal matters. And I did all of that while also overseeing all aspects of the curriculum, grant writing, planning for professional development, leading all of the audits and compliance tasks that school districts need to complete to make sure that we're operating at the highest level. This is, I've planned all administrative meetings and run all of the district committees, so I have a really good sense of our curriculum as well as all operational aspects of the school district. I applied for this job because I feel that the last four years in central office have prepared me well for the superintendency and I love this community. I also understand that Ducksbury is a community of high expectations and school district with high expectations. Many families moved to this community for the school district, as well as our excellence in athletics and our focus on the arts and music and everything else, it's a really well-balanced community and with our program. So as a high-performing district, I think we need to ensure that we're providing the highest quality education for students, providing current and innovative learning experiences, personalized learning and real-world experiences for students, a strong STEM background and frequent opportunities for critical thinking. And these are all areas where I feel confident that I can excel and lead the school district forward. So that's just a little bit of background about what brings me here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Klingerman. And I should have done a little bit of introductions, but I think, you know, you know everyone, we have our five school committee members and one of our student reps, Jake Nelson, with us, and then Ray and George from the Collins Center who's been assisting with the search process.
Great, so. Everybody.
You too. And our next question is going to be asked by Julia.
Great. So, Dr. Klingerman, as superintendent, how would you work to foster educational excellence within the Ducksbury Public Schools?
Well, I think that in my opening statement, I shared that Ducksbury is definitely a school community with high expectations. If I am selected to be the next superintendent of Ducksbury Schools, I would want to continue with the many effective practices and traditions that have served us well in the past, but also utilize opportunities for collaborative processes such as strategic planning. And last year, for another example, would be when we completed the Ducksbury Portrait of a Graduate Program, to be able to have all of our community stakeholders and parents, school committee, teachers, and everyone really come together to be able to research best practices, what the future of education holds and what are those trends, and then develop a cohesive plan. And so I think that the way I would foster educational excellence is just ensuring that we continue to make sure we have strong plans in place. I've worked in districts where strategic plans sit on a shelf and gather dust, or they're just kind of tucked along a school website and not a working, active document. But I think in my practice and in my experience, I've been able to make sure that we always have a strong strategic plan in place that we're updating yearly and that personally, my goals as a central office administrator are in line with the strategic plan goals. And then the school improvement plans are developed off of those goals and then our administrative team, as well as our teachers, are all working on goals that are having us row in the same direction. I think we're really fortunate in this community, I'll probably say it several times tonight, but we have highly engaged parents and a lot of really wonderful community groups. I've mentioned it in my previous interviews, but I've never been in a community with so many resources to enhance education that we have here in Ducksbury, such as DBMS, Ducksbury Student Union, the Rural and Historical Society, the Free Library, our town departments, our town boards, the senior center, really active PTAs and PTOs, as well as school councils. And I think they all really need to have input into the future goals and initiatives for the school district. I don't think it's one person that's making sure that the school continues to have excellent educational opportunities for students. So using that really collaborative approach and involving as many stakeholders as possible, I think it's important to make sure that we always have a strong strategic plan in our goals in mind so that we're all working towards the same goals and then coming back to those yearly to see if we're in line or if our focus areas need to be adjusted based on the times. I don't think anyone expected there to be a pandemic in the middle of our last strategic plan cycle. And so I think within that three-year period, things come up and you have to be able to reassess, make some adjustments and then continue to move forward together and not have one person leading the charge, but one person leading the charge with a lot of input from our stakeholder groups, including all the way to the students.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Kelly.
Hello, Dr. Klingerman.
Hi, Kelly.
Hi. So my question has multiple parts to it. What do you expect to be your top priorities for the district in your first year? And then for three to five years? And how would you enlist your staff to support this agenda?
I think in my first year, it would be a continuation of what I've been doing this year that has been effective. And so what I've found this year to be effective here in Ducksbury is regular communication with the community. And when I say community, I mean parents. I've been emailing parents on a weekly basis to keep them informed of things happening in the district. And I think that sometimes we've needed to have multiple communications within the same week. We've had a lot of weather events, a lot of events because of COVID and updates needing to happen. So I've tried to make sure that I'm staying ahead of where the communication is needed, so I'm not leaving people guessing. I think what else is, other things that have been effective for me this year are open office hours. We spent the last, last summer, there was a lot going on, as I'm sure many of you remember, but I think having parents have the opportunity to come in and ask questions directly was really important. And again, we're back on Zoom this evening, and I think for the last year and a half, being on Zoom, Zoom just makes us sometimes appear like faces on a screen and not real people. So I've really appreciated, and I will never take for granted again, the opportunity to have people in my office having conversations one-on-one or in small group because that's where you get to know each other a little bit better and where people can see where you're coming from. And I think that's really important for establishing trust because sometimes when we're presenting new ideas and initiatives, and the only time parents or anyone is hearing from me would be on a screen, that's not really the best, the best place to be sharing some of that new information. I think what other things that have been important to me through the years are regular attendance at PTA and PTO meetings, being able to attend CPAC meetings, school council. I'd continue with my entry plan where I'm really trying to do a deep dive into our district contracts, our budgets, any curriculum reviews that we've done in the past, areas that we've identified as needing to be able to focus on moving forward for improvement. So I'd like to continue the entry plan process and meeting with stakeholder groups. And so Dr. Wilcox, this, and I have been meeting with different stakeholder groups and asking for feedback about what are the strengths of our district, what are areas of growth and areas that our stakeholders are most proud of, because you never want to come into a new position and make changes where you're not taking the culture of the community into consideration. It's really important to respect the culture and what's important to the community before you move in and make any suggestions for moving forward. I think looking for the vision for the future, which would be the next three to five years, I'd want to continue to ensure that we have adequate budgets and advocate for the needs of our school district. And by doing that, I think the budget process is a really strong way to be able to share the needs of your school community and justify your spending and recommendations. But the best way to do that is always to have that transparent, really clear budget process so our families and our finance committee and the fiscal advisory committee and select board know how we're spending our funds and that they can see that we're, we're starting with a zero-based budget approach each year and really making sure that we're spending wisely. I think that it's been very important, and I think in Ducksbury, we need to be proud of the fact that we're not always focusing on the urgent matter at hand and ignoring other things that are important but not urgent. So while many communities have kind of stalled on initiatives and strategic plan goals over the past two years during the pandemic, we have really moved forward and finished a lot of projects that we had set out to do during our three-year strategic plans, such as that portrait of a graduate process and also implementing programs such as the new Orton-Gillingham training for our special education teachers and just some really important things that we didn't let get stalled because we were dealing with a lot of pandemic challenges. I think in the next three to five years, a huge impact you can have on student learning would be hiring, prioritizing hiring, ensuring that we're hiring the top-quality candidates that we should have here in Ducksbury and that we focus on that mentor program and development of our educators. I think the next three to five years, I would continue to make sure that our short and long-term goals are being addressed and making sure that all of us, as I said before, are rowing in the same direction and our goals are in line with our prioritized initiatives. I definitely see an opportunity here in Ducksbury for increased focus on STEM K through 12. I'd love to see technology integration, coaches be able to come in to support teachers and to be able to provide students with support to reach those digital literacy and computer science standards that are so important. And I think it's hard to be able to squeeze that in to the already-packed curriculum, but having those coaches would be something that would certainly enhance the instruction for all students. I think our DEI work, ensuring that all students have a place in our school and feel as though they belong, are going to continue to be an area of focus over the next three to five years. How can we look at post-pandemic learning? And I can't wait till we're actually post-pandemic, because I think this year we thought would be, and it ended up being, we're right in the middle again of surges that we weren't expecting and complicated, another complicated year of COVID. But we want to make sure that we're maintaining the high academic rigor, but limiting pressure and stress on students and also making sure that any learning gaps are being addressed and that we have, we have different plans in place for intervention. So I might mention this a couple of times too, but last year, once we were able to finally get our students back fully in person, I wrote a blueprint for learning, which was addressing our students' needs coming back after a year and a half of really interrupted learning. And that plan focuses on individualized instruction, intervention, utilizing our assessments so that we're making sure we know where students are, giving them real-time intervention. And so we also have really focused on differentiating instruction. And what that means is not just teaching the content and saying, I hope the kids are with me, but knowing where each student is day by day and being able to provide those small group learning opportunities for students, that will be very important for the next couple of years. I think we really need to step up our authentic learning opportunities, project-based learning, giving students different pathways to success, whether that looks, is looking at enhancing our CTE, our program. So just another example of that would be the work that I've partnered with Matt Files on to make sure that our students have opportunities for internships, utilizing our community partners to be able to get kids out into the community, get those work experiences and be able to get a sense of what they want to do post-college, or even if college isn't an option, different career paths in technical education and other, and other areas like that, where they might be able to get certifications while still in high school. And I think just continuing to look at our inclusion and equity in terms of obstacle-free access for our students. But I also think, vision moving forward, I have to continue to ask our staff members, is Ducksbury a great place to work? Are we retaining our teachers? Are we making sure that our professional development is what is needed? And what, what are, what our teachers need to be most successful and feel supported? Are operational procedures clear and what they need to be? Do our school administrators have the training and support that they need? I think the last two years have been extremely draining on our school administrators due to the constant contact tracing and having to look at the operations of the school. So it's, we can't, we can't be burning out our school administrators, we need to make sure that everyone is having a healthy life balance. And I think that goes along with our students too. We want it to be rigorous and high-achieving, but we also don't want to have our students experiencing high anxiety and stress all the time. We want that healthy life balance. And I think moving forward, as I had said before, high expectations and I think a focus on our special education program, making sure we have an appropriate continuum of services, that we have a strong, high-functioning CPAC so that our parents are feeling supported. I think having students on IEPs can be really challenging. And I think that that's an area that's challenging for many school districts. And I think in our district, we have an opportunity for some growth there. And I'm pleased to say that we have a special education audit underway. And I think that we'll be able to get some really strong feedback from our teachers, from our administrators and from our parents who are in the special education program.
All right. How you doing, Danielle?
Good, how you doing, Matt?
Good, you know, fight and cry. All right, so my question is about transparency and communication. So these are important aspects of, of being a superintendent. And I was wondering if you could give an example of how you would be open and communicative in this position in a way that ensures transparency?
Yep, and I think that it's, it's, there's a lot of things intertwined with being transparent. So I think the most important lesson, and I think you and I have had a lot of conversations about this, Matt, and lessons learned over the past two years, that communication is not a one-way street, but a two-way street. And I think that if I could go back and relive some of the things that we've experienced in the last two years, I would make sure that we had more avenues for people to be providing that, that two-way, that two-way communication. And I've tried to do that, but I think we can always do better. I mentioned before, what's, what is the best way to be transparent? Ways that I do that are through my office hours that I mentioned. I meet with parents all the time, and I think sometimes having a phone conversation or an in-person meeting is so much more effective than having an email, emails going back and forth because I get hundreds of emails a day and I get more out of a five-minute conversation with a parent because they can see, we can both see where each other is coming from and we can set up a meeting if we need to have further conversation. I think consistently emailing families with what's happening. And I've talked to our parents this year, I always try to find the balance between over-communicating, where it's tuned out and people don't even open your emails because it's like redundant, the same thing, or under-communicating, where people are saying, when are we going to hear from central office on this issue? She hasn't gotten back to us, so I always want to have that, that sweet spot. I think that it's really important to be transparent with the community when there's not a crisis. I think we learned last year that the key, one of the key responsibilities of superintendences to protect the fiduciary interests of the school district and protect our school district from unnecessary lawsuits. But with that, it's very challenging to make sure that we're communicating everything we can while being transparent and, but also not violating student employee, employee privacy rights. So I'd like to be able to communicate that challenge better while we're not in the middle of a situation where parents are having a lot of questions because there's something going on. So I've really tried to steady the ship this year and get everything back to a sense of calm and normalcy as much as possible during a year that's anything but calm and normal. I think the key, one of the key pieces, which I've been saying all along, is, is establishing trust and making sure people have that trust built ahead of time so that when things come up and you're sharing information, our community trusts that you're sharing everything that you can. And if you could share more, you would be. If you don't have that trust established, I think that's where people are suspicious and thinking that the school district is holding back information. So as a building principal, it was a huge adjustment for me to move from building principal to assistant superintendent because the district I left, I had been in for seven years as the building principal. And I had that established trust and I didn't have a lot of people questioning me in terms of if I was sharing new initiatives or anything that was going on. Because I had built those relationships, spent time at PTA events, spent time working at concession stands and getting to know our parents on a personal level and through those meetings, talking about concerns that had come up, parents learned to trust that I would be doing, following through and doing what I said that I was going to do. So I think that I need to do everything possible in my role as superintendent, interim superintendent this year and hopefully superintendent moving forward where I've established that trust so that when it's time to share information, people feel as though that there's nothing that's being withheld and that there's no, we're sharing absolutely everything we can. I think also transparency is really important with the budget process. As I had mentioned earlier, to use the budget process to really communicate the story of the current status of the school district and any real needs moving forward. I think it's important that we communicate with all stakeholders to understand the budget, meet people where they are, there's some people that would love to go through our budget items line by line to see how our money is being spent. And then there's other parents that are really, I mean, we have a lot of people that are very busy in our community and just want that general overview of where we are, where additional resources are needed and what they can do to help. So I think it's important to let our community and family members know when we're doing budget presentations, we're, we're really telling the story of what we need. And it's important that we break down the budget in terms that families and everyone can understand. And I think that's where Katie Blake has been really effective and able to break down our budget, or make, make really appropriate projections and plan for moving ahead, but also to be able to have families understand the budget. Because I've worked in a lot of districts where the budget process is not as transparent and clear, and I think that leads to trouble. So I'm, I'm really proud of the work we've done as a team over the past few years to make that budget process more transparent, to be able to work collaboratively with the finance committee, the select board and our town, our town departments, to be able to have that be a collaborative effort with the school department as, as well as the other town departments, so that when we head into town meeting, everyone's really on the same page with the current budget picture and, and what we are able to do moving forward for that year.
Great, thank you very much, and I think Kristin has the next question.
Hi.
I do. So Shannon, did you want to give an update on time?
Yeah, we've, we're 25 minutes through, so we're five minutes away from halfway through.
Okay.
We're, you know what, I'm on target.
Oh, perfect, okay. So, hi, Dr. Klingerman.
Hi, Kristin.
Is, what do you see as the role of the school committee? And what type of relationship do you think is needed to help the district be successful?
Well, I think the role of the school committee is a very important one. And I've said to all of you that I have so much respect and admiration for serving, serving on the school committee because it's extremely time-consuming. And the last two years have been anything but easy to serve as a school committee member on. And I think that what we've found over the past two years is that the decisions that we're having to make in school districts are such that we can only please a portion of our stakeholder groups at a time. And I think all of us do this work as school administrators or as elected officials on the school committee. You wouldn't do this work if you, if we all weren't aiming to have the best possible school district and to provide students with what they need. And so it's been really, really challenging to not be able to have a higher satisfaction rate. I always, I always want to please 100% of the people, and as much as I know you can't do that, it's been, it's been a hard couple of years because there's been such mixed feelings. because there's been such mixed feelings about, um, a number of things from remote learning plans to masking and everything else in between. So, um, I think it's essential to have, um, an effective school district for there to be a strong relationship between the school committee and the superintendent. I think the school, the superintendent's responsible for making sure that the school committee is informed about what's happening in the school district. I never want the school committee to find out that there's an ambulance at the school and they have no idea why. Cause I think there's so many things that come up and with, um, cell phones and social media being the way they are today. I think that, um, it's, it's hard to stay on top of communication. But in general, um, my thoughts on school committee relationships are that superintendent must keep the school committee ahead of things that are happening in the school district at a high level. I think sometimes having too much information can put the school committee in an awkward position. But obviously in terms of overseeing, um, superintendent hiring and evaluation, um, overseeing policy development, overseeing the budget, um, that there's a lot of implications with things happening in the school district that have, um, implications in those areas that the school committee is responsible for overseeing. And so my strategy this year and then in the past has been to communicate regularly with the school committee, making sure that we have relationships beyond just coming together for two-hour business meetings. I think, um, that's one thing. I don't think people are their true authentic selves during meetings. And so it's really important to me to be able to get to know school committee members, where they're coming from and their background, um, on an informal basis as, as much as possible. So, um, this year, my strategy has been to meet with the, um, school committee chair and co-chair, um, vice chair once per week, just to have a check-in meeting, make sure our agendas are in line. Just to keep the school committee, um, abreast of any situations that we had lingering, um, over from last year. And to be able to have a plan moving forward for any, um, any different, um, initiatives that we need to bring to the school committee to have the whole, um, school committee C and presentation. I think that it's also really important for the school committee to trust the, um, superintendent. So that when, uh, if a concern comes, the school committee's way that they have, um, a background of why some decisions have been made to be able to support the superintendent. And if there's questions, um, I think it's really important for the school committee members to be able to give superintendents feedback in real time. In schools, when we're evaluating educators, we never want the evaluation system to be a gotcha. To be able to say, oh, it's time for your formative evaluation midway through the year. Here's, um, six things that you can do better, um, that, that weren't presented to you maybe in the moment when you could have made some adjustments. So I try to be open and accepting of feedback along the way. And, um, I feel like I've gotten a ton of feedback in my time. And so I think that because of, I do make people feel comfortable to be able to tell me if there's an area that I, that they think I can improve on, whether it's from a school committee member or whether it's from an administrator or a teacher. I do try to take that feedback and make an adjustment whenever possible. Cause I do try to always say feedback is a gift, even though in the moment, sometimes it doesn't feel like a gift. So I think it's important for the, um, school committee and the superintendent to have that relationship, um, where it's ongoing feedback. I think superintendents need encouragement from the school committee because I think we're all in positions where I make sure that I am always grateful, um, and show my appreciation to the administrative team and to our teaching staff. And I think sometimes you can feel really, um, stressed out and pressured when you're the, um, superintendent, not knowing if you're doing what the school committee needs. And I think sometimes we hear a lot about what's not working well, um, and not a lot of what's working, um, well and what people are happy about. So I think that that is, is really important for, um, school committees to be able to give that positive feedback back if there's things that are working well, because that makes us all, um, appreciate and know that our efforts in, in certain directions are effective. And if there's things we can do differently, um, I'm certainly open to, um, feedback in, um, through, along the way and not just at the end of the year. Or I think we have the mid-year goals report and that's an opportunity to get some targeted feedback. And, um, and so I think that it's, it's a really important relationship. And I think we've been fortunate in Duxbury to have great school committees since I've been here. And, um, I've worked with a number of school committees in the past as a principal. And I think that, um, it's always appreciated as a principal to be able to go before the school committee, to be able to share the wonderful things that are happening in your school that you're working on with your teaching staff and your school councils. And I think that, um, if there's ways for us to be able to highlight, um, some of the great work in the schools more frequently, um, having more frequent student visits to the school committee, um, more positive opportunities for our schools to share what's happening. I think it brings us all back to our purpose of, um, why we're all doing this work. Because there's a lot of really amazing teaching and learning going on and our students are generally really happy and, um, very successful. So I think that, um, we always have to check ourselves and not just be worrying about task-oriented budget all the time, but, um, really looking at celebrating the learning and success, um, in the classroom. So. That's my thoughts on school committee. One, one more piece before we move on. I do think that, um, it's been really wonderful, um, to have tours of the buildings in real time. So I know Matt has toured, we've, I think I've toured with all of you, actually Kelly and, um, Chris, I don't know if we've had a chance to walk around the school buildings, especially with COVID over the past two years. But I think, um, it's really wonderful for school committee members to see the teaching and learning in action when possible. And I think we are really lucky here in Duxbury and in districts I've worked in in the past where teachers want to show off the, the work that they're doing with their students. And so we have amazing educators here in Duxbury who are always thrilled to have people walk through and see what's happening in their classrooms. So I think the more we can do, um, those walkthroughs when we're back in, back in a little bit more normal times is, um, really essential. And it allows you to see the programs that we discuss at school committee in action in our classrooms. So I would love to do that more.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the, the next question's going to be asked by Jake Nelson. I will say we're, we're several minutes past the halfway mark and we've got six questions to go. So.
Okay.
All right, Jake, you're up.
Hi, Dr. Klingman, how are you?
Hi Jake.
Um, so my question is, can you give an example of a specific way you have engaged students and worked collaboratively with them in the past? And then the second part to that is, and how would you engage and work collaboratively with students in the future?
Okay. Good question. Um, I can say that the number one best part of my job as a school administrator is working with students. And so any day that I get to see students, I am happy. Um, I got to go in Erica Stoloff's class this week and I learned about photos. Was I learning about, yes, photosynthesis. See Erica, if you're watching, I have my science experiment here on my desk. Some examples I can give you of ways I've engaged with students in the past. So as I said, I was a building principal for 14 years. And when I, when I started in both of the schools where I was principal, um, there hadn't been an established student council. And I worked with students in elementary school, um, up to grade five. And so I was able to bring student councils to my elementary schools. And I did that through, um, a job application process where I had students who were interested in serving on the student council, completed job application and submit that to me and then I would interview them. Um, I sometimes feel as though elections for school councils end up being, um, not an authentic way to select the best students who might be, um, an ideal candidate for student council. And I think we have a lot of kids who are, um, a little more on the reserved shy side and a little shy, who if you, if given the opportunity to have a leadership role, really shine. And so I was so proud of the, um, number of students who went through my elementary student councils who ended up being on their high school student councils, um, and it's a real confidence boost. And so the way we used to function with our student councils, um, when I was a principal, is so we were able to vote on our initiatives for the school year, including community service projects that would be, um, run by the whole school, um, plan for special school events, decide on new menu items in the cafeteria. And that was always a really, um, popular day when the cafeteria, um, director would bring new sample items for the students to try and be able to, um, have new items on the, um, the menu. And the students were so excited when they sampled the new item that they picked and it showed up on the, um, on the menu for the next month. Um, our student council also provided training for younger students. If we were having issues with bullying or if we were talking about safe, um, computer use. And so our student council was really able to build their leadership skills through the year, um, on that. And for the many students who applied for student council but didn't make it on, I created a position called student ambassadors, because I hate to, um, not involve students who took the initiative to go through the whole application process and then didn't get selected for student council. They all became a student ambassador. And so what I was able to do with student ambassadors is have them, um, I think it turned out to be more manual labor than anyone anticipated, but that's okay. So they were in charge of taking up and putting down the many hundreds of chairs for concerts. Or if I needed things passed out in a hurry, I'd be able to call my student ambassadors to the office and they would be able to do something that would have taken me two hours and about 20 minutes. Um, our student ambassadors also took, um, if we had people from the Department of Education visiting, or if we had state legislators visiting the school, they would be in charge of tours. Or if we had new students, they'd be in charge of tours. So, um, I was able to really bring a lot of student leadership opportunities in our school and have our school be really student-centered. Our student council members and student ambassadors would also be able to introduce, if we had, um, concerts or special events happening, to be able to practice some of those public speaking skills. So, um, another simple way that I've always collaborated with students is, um, just being present in classrooms and talking to the students about what they're learning. So I've, I'm in classrooms as much as I possibly can and I would love to be in classrooms on a daily basis. And I think that's a goal area for me moving forward. Some ideas I have for future student engagement, um, would be, um, last week when I met for my interview with our student forum, one thing I talked about was having a student, a superintendent's, um, student advisory committee. I would love to have a group of interested students apply to be on that, um, superintendent's advisory committee, at a time when it wouldn't interfere with their courses. But, um, I think that's something that would be a nice resume builder for our students to be able to have, um, that opportunity to, uh, share what's working well, ideas for improvement and, um, just be able to have some feedback on some of the things, curriculum and different aspects of school to be able to get that student voice directly. Just last week, um, the interim assistant superintendent, Dr. Wilcox and I met with a few randomly selected student groups that Mr. Donovan was able to, um, set up for us. And I always try to get student representation, not just from students who are volunteering, but, um, just the students that may be on the quieter side that wouldn't raise their hand to want to come talk to me. So I try to get that, those, um, equal groups of not just students that are on our student council, but students that have different areas of interest and, um, are in different kinds of, um, course schedules. But I did speak to the students last week about what's working really well for them in Duxbury schools, areas that they think we could have improvement and, um, what they're most proud of. Jake, that's how I met you last year. I don't know if everyone knows how Jake ended up on the school committee, but I hope that he's glad that he did what he did. But last year, when we were going through some troubled times in, um, the school district, Jake reached out to the school committee and emailed and just said that, um, as a student, there were some questions about what was going on that hadn't been answered and was just a little bit, um, disappointed in, um, the communication with the students. And so, um, I was so glad to hear that he reached out to do that. So we immediately set up a meeting and I think Kristin, that was when you first had, um, joined us on school committee. And so Kristin joined us and the former superintendent and we just picked Jake's brain for about an hour, about everything that was going on, how he was feeling. And he was so articulate in sharing what, um, what was working really well and some areas where we had fallen down with not communicating with students to the best manner that we could have. And so Jake got more than he bargained for because he ended up on the school committee after that because he did such a nice job. But it's been, it's been really wonderful just hearing Jake's got a special way of, um, being very honest and, and not in a critical manner, but, um, being able to really, I think he does a really nice job asking other students in his classes and his friend group and people that he comes across for feedback and sharing that in an unbiased way. Um, and so I think every time we engage students and we talk to them about what's going on and how, and how are things, um, working for you and what interest groups do you have? And what we could do to make school better, we always leave with valuable feedback. And so last week, when we met with our student focus groups, um, not for my interview, but when we were just meeting with students to get feedback, a couple of the high school students shared that they didn't know we had a school psychologist or that there were counselors that worked with students beyond just the guidance counselors. And so we spend so much time working on our mental health support and services for students and hearing that students who may be going through an episode of anxiety or feeling a little bit down or worried or going through something, um, with friend group or family or whatever it may be, don't know who they can turn to. That tells me that we have a real opportunity to be able to better share our social and emotional resources and support. And so, um, I think, I think we just need to make sure that, um, our superintendent is communicating with students. I personally, if I am selected to be the next superintendent of Duxbury, want to know the students and I want the students to know me. I miss being in the buildings with students on a daily basis. So anything that I can do to have relationships with students is going to be, um, a top priority. I don't want to be just, um, again, like I said, a face on a screen or somebody that occasionally is walking by in the hallway. I want the students to know who I am and where I'm coming from and that they can always come to me as well as the rest of our, um, wonderful administrative team to share ideas and suggestions. So that's an opportunity moving forward.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we have, um, Michael. And we do, if we're going to get through all of our questions, we need to just go a little bit faster, otherwise we're going to have to skip up.
I'll hurry up.
Hi, Dr. Klingman.
Nicole, I didn't see you there. I would have said hi to you too, when I was talking to Jake.
Oh, no, it's fine. Sorry. I thought it turned up 5:30. I was freaking out when I got a text from Jake. I like came back from my swim practice. Uh, so what does equity mean to you and how do you plan to incorporate it into the Duxbury Public School System?
Okay. So equity, um, I'll make sure that my answers are a little bit more brief. I had mentioned it earlier, um, I think that equity to me is just making sure that all of our students have, um, obstacle-free access to all of the programs and resources and experience that we can offer. And not just our students, but our families, um, from any, whether, whether our families are from Duxbury, new to Duxbury or, um, whether they are native English speakers or just making sure that all of our families are able to access our programs and feel as though they have a place of belonging in our schools. And I think when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion, um, we've been talking about that in Duxbury for a long time. It was part of our initial strategic plan, um, that we developed back in 2018 and 19. And it's one of our core values, which is equity and inclusion. So I think in communities like Duxbury where we do have a little bit of a lack of diversity, um, with race and ethnicity, it's important that we focus on pri- prioritizing experiences for students where they're able to learn about diverse perspectives, um, and then engage in culturally sensitive instruction and practices so that our students of color, um, and any students of diverse backgrounds and, um, ideas feel welcome and have a sense of belonging. And so we've been really doing some amazing things here in Duxbury in the past year. We have the Holocaust Remembrance Day coming up, I think tomorrow. And I've just been blown away with the work that our, our new DEI coordinator, Kaitlin Shan, has been doing. I'm proud to say that I advocated for that position as a way to be able to make sure that every student in Duxbury schools has a sense of belonging and is, um, is being supported. And we have been working really hard over the past year to, um, have our community be represented in the way it should be and that we're, um, actively, um, working with students to be inclusive and use sensitive language, making sure all students feel welcome and that we hear and respect diverse perspectives. And no matter what your background or perspective is, our job in schools is to make sure that we're teaching students to have civil discourse and be respectful of those different opinions, whether that's in person or online. And I think that if we do a really great job of that in schools, I think our society is going to benefit from that moving forward. Because I think it's difficult sometimes for adults to remember to be polite and respectful when they're online and there's different viewpoints and perspectives. So I think that, um, we've done a lot of things in our school. I won't list them all out, but we've, um, engaged with student leaders. We've engaged with a core group of educators here in district. And we are, um, really trying to provide a balanced approach to diversity, equity and inclusion so that, um, that we also partner with our Duxbury For All, um, our Duxbury Rotary and the, um, Interfaith Council. Because I think these issues are not something the school district can solve alone. We need to make sure that we're partnering with our, um, community groups and that we are, um, it being as inclusive as we, as we possibly can in our district committees, like our DEI committee, so that we have parent representation and community member representation, um, in all of those areas. So, um, again, I'm proud of the work we've done and I think it's important that we continue to have our eye on that, um, moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Second question from me. Well, it's not from, that I'm saying, how do you collaborate with your leadership team to navigate through different opinions or approaches?
Okay. So I think collaborating with my leadership team, um, I think my background as a special education teacher allowed me to individualize my approach, um, in working with members of the teaching staff allowed me to individualize my approach in working with members of the teaching staff or my administrative team. You can't have a one-size-fits-all approach to leadership, just like you can't be a teacher and just have one approach to teaching students. And so I really try to develop relationships with my leadership team so that we have a level of trust established. And I think that relationships are at the core of everything we do. I do encourage and ask my leadership team to provide alternative viewpoints and play the devil's advocate and argue with me. I don't want a team of people that are just agreeing with me. I don't think we can grow and make progress if there's not people that are willing to disagree with me or other members of the leadership team in a respectful way. I think sometimes navigating the different opinions and approaches, I have, I can, I have a good skill set in being direct, but not being offensive. And so I think that helps me navigate some difficult conversations with families as well as our administrative team. And I, I feel as though my administrators feel comfortable to come to me for advice. I can be, I'm always confidential and they can share their ideas with me and I disagree with maybe some suggestions I've had and tell me why it's not going to work. I try to let our building principals run their buildings. I believe in site management. I don't believe in micromanaging. But I do believe it's really important for a superintendent to be able to coach and guide our administrators so that they're being provided with regular feedback and suggestions for improvement. And I welcome that same feedback to me. I've always surveyed our administrators. And since I've been in Duxbury and in previous districts where I was a principal, I've asked for anonymous direct feedback about my performance, ways I can better support my team. And I, I've tried to be really open to feedback and give anonymous opportunities for people to provide that feedback. And so I will continue to welcome growth and strategies that my team can share with me. Leadership-wise, I feel like I'm a strong communicator. I'm willing to do any job in the district. There's nothing that I won't step in and do. I believe in follow-through. You're only as good as your word. That's how trust is built. I try to be collaborative and I try to let people who have strengths in different areas really shine. We have a member of our administrative team who loves logistics and he knows who he is. And so if I can let that administrator run with, with a project, I do believe in distributing leadership and maximizing people's strengths and having our, our administrative team grow. I'm really proud that we have three members, our, our administrative team here in Duxbury that are working on their doctorate right now. I think that's really fantastic and I'm so proud of them. I think that I try to have a culture of learning, and so every meeting that we have, I try to provide professional development and learning opportunities for all of us as administrators and to be able to really step back and take a moment away from dealing with the crisis at hand and focusing on our own professional growth through having our administrators present, to be able to teach each other and to use each other's knowledge. And I think most of all, I try to have a sense of humor. I can laugh at myself and I'm not, I don't take myself too seriously. And I definitely don't claim to know everything, so I show vulnerability. I don't have all the answers and I'm very aware that to be successful in a superintendency, you can't go in thinking you can do the work alone. You have to distribute that leadership and have members of your administrative team use their strengths and support, and support you and each other because it's, it's just impossible to do this job without that. And I think overall, I always try to remember what it was like to be a teacher because I think we're all teachers to start and we've ended up in administrative roles, but we cannot get so detached from the classroom that we're forgetting the day-to-day, what it's like to be a teacher with, in some cases, a hundred and twenty students and in other cases, you're with the same group all day, but that's extremely challenging work.
Great. Shannon, I just wanted to check in on the time. It looks like it's four minutes to the top of the hour. So how do you want to proceed?
Yes, well, she started at five after, so we have, we have nine minutes for three questions.
Okay.
Yeah, so let's.
All right, so, well, this is good news, Dr. Kleiman. This one's easy.
Okay.
This is gonna take me thirty seconds to read. So you find yourself in a challenging position, for example, advocating for a controversial new initiative, responding to a complex situation or proposing budget reallocations in response to fiscal limitations. And the school committee and parents are divided on the issue. You strongly believe your plan of action will be highly beneficial to students. What steps would you take to promote your plan?
Okay, so I think, I'll try to be as succinct as I can with this one. I think that if you're presenting a new controversial, new initiative, that prior to presenting that, you need to start with getting stakeholder feedback and being able to break down the need so that you're not finding yourself saying, here's something that we need to do. It's very important for the school district. We really need this and we need your support. And having that be the first time that our community is hearing about it. And so I think that it's really important to not be springing new initiatives on a community. I think that it's essential that you're sticking to your strategic plan and you're revisiting it on a yearly basis so that if there's something lacking that needs to be added, that we do that in a collaborative manner so that there's no surprises. I don't think you should be surprising your stakeholder groups. You shouldn't be surprising your school committee by saying that all of a sudden we've done a curriculum review and we believe that we should be eliminating one of our world languages. I think that it's important to have school committee members on our curriculum committees and to have parents involved with that process and so that we can be communicating along the way what our needs are and what recommendations we might have moving forward. And if something turns out to be controversial, I think that it's important to develop working groups where you can have different stakeholders come together to talk about the concerns, talk about the issues and perhaps bring back to the, whether it's a school committee or whether it's a parent group that you're presenting the new initiative to, so that there's a clear explanation of why this is needed, where the data is coming from. We can't just be making decisions arbitrarily without having it be data-based. So I think that it's important to be doing the, have the data to back up what you're presenting, research-based data, data use approach to be able to share some of those new initiatives and then be able to have ambassadors that can reach out and share why this is necessary for the school district and be able to make the decision so that it's not polarizing, so that it's one group against another. I think we've, we face that a lot, but I think with strong communication and a plan, you can avoid being in some of those tricky situations.
Great, thank you. And I think Kelly has the next question.
Thanks, Matt. All right, Danielle, name a professional failure, describe the situation and what you learned from it.
Okay, this one is, is definitely a tough one and makes me feel vulnerable sharing it, but I will, I will do that. This past year, at a school committee meeting, there was definitely a situation where I felt like a fail, like I had failed. Mrs. Blake and I had just presented a really elaborate budget presentation. It was our November third meeting. The budget presentation is really a result of five months of work. And to finally get to that school committee meeting, it feels like you're running a marathon and you finally cross the finish line. So Mrs. Blake and I had just finished presenting this, the FY twenty-three budget. And what happened was a situation came up that I was not expecting or prepared for. We had a member of our community that came to the podium at open comment and said some things that were shocking and unexpected. And they were really hurtful and inappropriate and hateful, to be honest. And I froze and I didn't speak up in that moment. And I know school committee meetings aren't my meeting and it's not always my role to be able to speak up and to say something. But in that moment, I needed to have spoken up and I felt as though, as soon as I got in the car that evening to drive home, I felt as though I had let down a teacher. I had let down a school that was attempting to implement a program that was brought forth by students and much needed. And I just feel like in our district, we talk about teaching students interrupters where if someone is saying something inappropriate or hurtful, I think that we teach our students to be able to say, stop, what you're saying is inappropriate, or can you rephrase that in a more respectful way, or what did you mean by that? And I did none of those things in that moment. And so I found myself not being able to sleep that night and I ended up doing whatever I could after the fact to be able to go to that person and apologize personally and a couple of people that were offended by my lack of action. And I will never let myself be in a situation like that again. I need to be able to speak up in a respectful way that honors the person that's speaking, but also calls out if there's hateful language being shared in our school community. There's really no room for that and it's, I never want to disappoint our teaching staff or our administrators by having me be in a position where I'm not supporting them. I think that sometimes you learn the hard way when you have a conversation that doesn't go as well as you want to. I think in general, I have had situations where I've learned through the years, through conversations that maybe didn't go the way I wanted them to, to be reflective. And so I think I've improved a lot in my communication skills, so I don't really have meetings that, that go wrong as much anymore. But I think that through being a school administrator for as long as I have, I've learned a lot of lessons. But that comes to mind as one situation where I wish I could have reacted in a different manner. And I, I will be prepared for situations like that more effectively moving forward.
Thank you, and I think Julia is going to finish us up.
Yes, thank you.
Just one quick thing. We have three minutes, but Dr. Kleiman, you can take the option if you want to use a little bit of your fifteen minutes to finish up this last question because we are on the last question, so.
That's great.
Okay, Julia, sorry.
Great. So the last question is, resources are always a hurdle. But given your understanding of Duxbury's municipal fiscal position, what one thing, one change, one initiative, would you propose that you believe would have the most positive and lasting transformational impact for children in the Duxbury Public Schools?
So that's a long question to have, be the last one that I need to hurry up on. But I think it's difficult to choose one thing, but I will try to stick to the question. I think the greatest impact we could have on all students would be to individualize or personalize learning for every student and not just say it, but really practice that concept. There are ways that you can influence student outcomes that don't have budgetary implications and some that do. So I think increasing intervention opportunities for students in real time is one important initiative that I think has the greatest impact for all students, to make sure that all students are learning at their level, getting the support they need in real time. It's not always a staff member that needs to be doing it, but I think utilizing some of our technology integration resources that have personalized learning plans for students, but also making sure that we have intervention structures that are in place to be able to support all students. I think we, I had mentioned earlier, need to have pathways for students beyond the college track. I think that we need to get our students out in the community, hands-on, project-based learning. And I think we also need to make sure that we have a good handle on our students' current learning levels so that if students already know the content, we may not have gifted and talented programs, but what we need to be able to do is challenge students who already have mastered the learning concepts for the grade level so that we are not just having students not be engaged and challenged. So I think that can be tricky because we're working with students who have a large range of skills and needs. Some of those individualized needs that they have may be social and emotional. Other times, they may be academic. But we, through the pandemic and where we are now, we see that there's a huge need for us to focus on individualizing learning for all students and providing rich enrichment opportunities. So we want to see all of our students beaming when they come in the buildings in the morning and are just having that joy. And I, I think we can always do a better job of that, whether it's kindergarten all the way up to grade twelve or pre-K. We want to make sure that our kids are experiencing joy, are feeling seen and heard, and that we're fostering their, their individual interests so that they are able to do some passion projects and really be able to focus on what's interesting to them and not just our course content.
Great, thank you very much.
I'd say you packed a lot in there, Dr. Kleiman. Well done.
Thank you.
So now we're at the portion where if you have any questions about the district and happy to answer them and got fifteen minutes for the questions and some type of kind of closing statement if you'd like.
I actually do not have any questions of the committee, and so that's good. I hope that gives us a little more time of not feeling rushed.
Yeah, I mean, I guess then, do we want to, do people have follow-up questions? Is there anything that you didn't get a chance to say that you want to share? I mean, please, we can use this time.
I interrupted you. I'm sorry, Shannon.
No, no, it's fine. Go ahead, please. So following up on the role of the school committee question, how would you best deal with, we're gonna have two new people on the school committee in March. How do you see yourself working with a newer school committee and/or possibly a divided school committee or a school committee that's all harmonious and homogeneous? Like what, can you sort of hit on that? I'm not being very eloquent.
I think that having turnover on the school committee is, I think we've had a really wonderful school committee. It makes me sad to think that we won't have the, all the members that we have with us right now moving forward. But I think we can utilize Kristin's experience as a new member coming on last year. So I'd love to be able to talk to her about what was challenging during her transition, what could I have done better in my role as assistant superintendent or this year's interim to make that transition more smooth, run, be more smooth for new members. I think we, I think as a committee, you all did a nice job making sure that we had trainings that took place so that new members were able to come in and understand policy-wise and legally what the role of the school committee is so that that was clear. And I think that attending that school committee training is really essential and having school committee retreat opportunities is really an essential, essential part as well. I think that you're not always going to have harmonious decisions. And I think that the reason that we have a school committee in the first place is that there may be diverse opinions shared. And so I think it's just like working with the leadership team, is making sure that our committee members' voices are being heard by the superintendent and by each other as much as possible so that whether or not you are able to always agree unanimously on decisions, I don't think necessarily needs to be the goal, but I think that having that respectful discourse and listening to what's being presented is really important. So those are some ways. I think if we have new school committee members in March, I would want to be able to have meetings with them to talk about the, the reasons that they were interested in serving on the school committee, talk to them about ways that they learn best and function best as a team and then really come to some group norms and agreements that we can work under so that we can have the most effective school committee possible. So I think just having that honest upfront communication and some strategies for if issues come up, how as a, as a team, we would like to move forward with solving them and just getting that consensus, consensus on some of the norms would be helpful.
Thank you. Yeah, and thank you, Kelly. And I, you know, I wasn't expecting that we would have this time. So I just, Kelly's question was like a clarifying question, so to the extent anybody wants to ask questions, let's make sure they're clarifying of, of things that have already been asked. I don't want to go too far off in terms of keeping us within the topics that we've already addressed. Dr. Kleiman, would you like to?
Sure. I can give my closing statement.
Yeah.
And then you can send me back to the land of attendees. And so I just want to summarize by sharing that, I think you're all aware of this, but I was able to step in last July during a very tumultuous time in our community and I was able to calmly get the district back on track by providing consistent communication, stability, high expectations and a clear plan moving forward. This year has been anything but back to normal, but under my leadership, we have continued to move forward with district initiatives that I've shared this evening based on our strategic planning goals. We've been able to move forward and pivot with COVID regulations and protocols and changes to testing programs and surges. And I won't pretend that this has been easy, but I will say that I've been loyal and committed to the school district all the way through. And it was really important to me personally to get everything back on track because I think what our community went through last year was extremely difficult. And the heart of this community is amazing and it really was hurtful to see some of the negative press and media that we were facing last year. So I, I'm committed to making sure that everyone sees what the heart of Duxbury is and it's not some of what was shown last year. I think fit is extremely important in the superintendency. This is a very, very difficult job. You can ask any superintendent. You can ask any superintendent across the state and no one will say that this is easy, but it's really important to me to be in a community that supports its schools, its superintendent, um, to have a, a talented and dedicated teaching staff and the support of a strong administrative team, which I know we have here in Duxbury. Uh, you can't do this work alone, and I'm only as strong as my team. And I don't think there's a better team in the Commonwealth than the one we have here in Duxbury. Um, I drive a long way to come to work and I do it for a reason because I love being here and I wouldn't do my commute if I didn't love where I was going to end up at the end of it. And as I mentioned in my cover letter, I hope that you had a chance to read my cover letter um when I submitted my application materials and my letters of recommendation. But as soon as I drove into this community for the first time, I knew that this community was special. Um, and I, after meeting the people here, the teaching staff, the administrators, the parents, and most of all the students, I knew this is where I wanted to be. And right now, um where we are, I believe I have the support of our school community. Um, I believe I have the district level experience needed to lead our high-performing district. Um, I believe I have the qualifications and the strong relationships in place to be the next superintendent of Duxbury Schools. And so I thank you for the opportunity to share that this evening, and um I think that's it.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Dr. Klingman.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Take care. You can send me away now.
Have a good evening.
Okay, um, so now we're going to take a brief break so that um school committee members can take a few notes and um kind of organize their thoughts. And the next candidate, we're actually going to adjust the start time. The next candidate, which means I have to go change my cheat sheet on the, on the warnings. So it's gonna, we're gonna start at 6:35 with the next candidate. Um, so I don't know if people want to exit or just put yourself on um video off and then come back, but we've got about um 20 minutes. Okay.
Great, thanks.
Hey, everyone. Since we're all back, I'll just um go ahead and um go over the framework again. So um regarding the, the structure for, for the candidate interview. The way we're structured for tonight for everybody um is uh 60 minutes Q and A and 15 minutes for candidates' questions and closing statements. We definitely discovered in the first uh round that this, it is um, we do have multiple questions and they're cover a broad range of topics, so I am going to continue to play the role of timekeeper and um remind folks to keep going so that we can cover all the topics because it's helpful to get through all of them to hear the full, all the answers. Um, so I'll give uh time reminders halfway through with 15 minutes left and with five minutes left during the Q and A portion. And I will also provide a five-minute warning during the 15-minute ending session. And um clarifying questions are permitted, although I think we did find that that's a little bit hard to do because the content is, is so in-depth, but we do have that option if we want to use that. So we'll just give it a few minutes uh so that we can start at 6:35. Okay, we're at 6:35, so bringing in the next candidate, Alan Strauss. Hi, Mr. Strauss, welcome.
How is everybody tonight?
Good, how are you doing?
Hi, thanks.
We're gonna do a quick round of introductions. Um, we have Ray and George from the Collins Center, who I believe you've already met. And then we have our five school committee members and our two student representatives. If everyone can just go around and say hello, and I'm Shannon, we had, I had the opportunity to meet Mr. Strauss during his day in the, in the district.
Julia, and we've met um at the screening committee and at lunch.
Sorry, Julie, I was trying to do the um alphabetical and I didn't do that too well. I'm Kelly Bresnahan, and I'm part of the dinosaur on school committee, so welcome, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Matt.
Hi, Mr. Strauss. Nice to meet you virtually. My name's Matt Gambino, a member of the school committee. Welcome.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Strauss, thanks for joining us tonight. My name's Kristen O'Connell, and I met you briefly after the student forum.
Yeah, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Jake, want to say hi?
Hi, Mr. Strauss. Uh, I'm Jake, and I'm a junior at the high school, and I'm one of the student reps to the school committee.
Nice to meet you, Jake.
Hi, Mr. Strauss. I'm Michael O'Malley. I'm also a student rep, and I'm a sophomore. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Great, thank you, everyone. And um, Mrs. Strauss, I don't know if you heard, but we have a six, the way we schedule is 60 minutes for, um, we have 11 questions and then 15 minutes for you to ask questions and to do a closing statement, and I'm going to be the timekeeper. So I'm gonna give some reminders here and there to try and stay on track because we're going to be um a little bit strict with the time.
Lock in front of me, so I'm, I'm prepared.
Okay, all right, great. Um, so I, I get the opportunity to start with the first question, so I'll go ahead and kick it off. Um, question is, why did you apply for this job? And given what you know about Duxbury and our school system, why do you feel you would be the perfect candidate for this position?
So first of all, thank you for having me. I'm really looking forward to having a conversation with all of you, and that's really what this is about. It's been a wonderful process from the beginning. When I first applied to Duxbury, the reason was I want to be a superintendent, but I don't want to be a superintendent anywhere. And, and so I did a tremendous amount of research from Envision Duxbury all the way through everything that Duxbury is doing, has done. I've read every article. You know, we all know what happens over the last year and a half. And, and what I learned was when I first began teaching, I taught in a community very similar to Duxbury in Weston, Connecticut, a top-five school for 30 straight years, top 100 nationally. And, and it's where I learned my roots, my foundation, um, my foundation to excellence. Eight years into my career, my superintendent asked me a very simple question, what is your goal? And I was young and brash and said to him, I want your job. And he said, go out and see the world. And, and in order to be a great superintendent, you have to have experiences far beyond just what you see right here. So I've been in multiple districts. I've been uh in Nagata, Connecticut, which is 40% EL students. I've been in Windsor, which is almost 80% BIPOC students of color. Um, at the Gilbert School, where I ran both a middle school and a high school, similar to here in Duxbury, except for the fact that there was one principal, so I oversaw both. Um, we were also an international school, and I came to Massachusetts um to be closer to my son, who utilizes Boston Children's Hospital, and I chose Waymouth for its diversity, but also because of its vocational tech um component, of which I oversee that as well as, as well as the comprehensive. So there's very little that I have not seen in education. And in spending multiple weekends here, listening to lots of school committee meetings, um, visiting multiple places, uh, the thrift shop and, and Brothers Market and every place else that, that I visited, sailors and, and what I found was a community that says what it means. And, and by that, I mean, I, I read in the Envision Duxbury report, it talked about what is your top priority um for the community? And its number-one priority, 77%, was a successful school district. That says a lot to me. Um, and so I haven't applied to other places. I applied here because this is where I think I'm ready to connect my core values of empathy, integrity, equity, inclusion, rigor, excellence, and opportunities for all. Your, your four pillars line up with exactly what I've done my entire career. Um, equity, inclusion, for example, is not something that I started three years ago with the um, the horror with George Floyd. It's something that I've done for 25 years. Social-emotional learning pillar one. Um, if you look at my resume, I was director of um the student assistance team at Weston High School district-wide when I was 26. And that was tier-one, tier-two, and tier-three interventions many years ago. So I've seen it all, and, and this is a, in my opinion, a perfect fit for me. Um, it was, I was absolutely sure of that with the search committee and even more sure of that when I met the teachers and when I met the students. Student body blew me away. So I'm really excited for this, and I, I look forward to talking tonight.
Julia.
Great, thank you. Hi, Mr. Strauss. As superintendent, how would you work to foster educational excellence within the Duxbury Public Schools?
Absolutely. So obviously, the first five years foundationally is the key to everything. So we have to ensure that our primary schools are strong and with the understanding that where our primary school students are, where um Michael is as a sophomore, maybe Jake is a junior, we don't even know the jobs that are going to be available to them when they graduate from college. So we have to be very much aligned with moving our kids forward, understanding, providing, understanding that we are providing opportunities that are connected to personalized learning plans, connected to project-based learning, connected to um ensuring educational excellence for where students are. Whether it is um our special education students, we have to make sure that we're providing them opportunities um so that they can be as successful as they can be. Our vocational tech students, our students who are going into the military, our students who are going to four-year colleges, medical school, um, and, and want to become lawyers and engineers. So we have to provide opportunities to push rigor, to push excellence, but also to take care of our kids, to make sure that our soft skills are taken care of so that whatever our students choose, and for some of us who have been in education a while, we don't know what it's going to look like in 15 years. So we have to provide an umbrella where our kids are going to be able to find their niche that may not exist today. And, and that's a complex task, but it's a task that if we are scaffolding from the time our kids enter into primary school, all the way through till they graduate Duxbury High School, I think we're going to be in a pretty good place. We have to provide as many opportunities early on. So it's um, I know that our kindergartners are taking Spanish. So what do we do with that? And how do we use Spanish as a kindergarten student so that they have bilingual, trilingual opportunities so that when they leave Duxbury, the community of Duxbury, Duxbury Public Schools, they can go in so many avenues? We cannot just wait until high school. So it's, it's ensuring that we're taking care of their social-emotional needs and ensuring educational excellence and combining social-emotional needs are not separate entities. So too often, I think that people look at, if we're going to take care of the social-emotional needs, we have to tear down rigor, and I don't think that's necessarily true at all. So for example, if we add AP Capsule Diploma Program, that means Jake is a sophomore, can begin taking an AP class earlier so that he is used to what is going on. That's one piece. The next piece is, for example, I'm just going to give you an example of a high school. I want our kids taking four APs, if that's what they want. What we have to do on the social-emotional side is ensure that they can handle that. And I do not mean can they do the work. Can we make sure that they are not on overload? So one of the suggestions that I certainly have done previously, uh, we did in Connecticut, and it, it worked phenomenally. We just did it um in Waymouth, is to scaffold testing. So example, um, and I don't know, Jake, if you're taking AP classes or not, but generally what happens with AP classes is teachers are not talking to each other. So it could be you go three or four days with no tests, and then suddenly you have three. And if you're playing sports or you're in theater and we're all excited for Little Mermaid this weekend, let's hope it doesn't snow out. I know it was canceled on Saturday, but we have to ensure that there is constant communication. So what, what we're doing is ELA can only take tests on Monday. History can only take tests on, AP tests on Tuesday. Math on Wednesday, Thursday is word language, Friday is science. What that does is it prevents the overload of our students who are on overload anyway. And, and so there are lots of ways to begin to balance and continue excellence without necessarily adding more and adding more and adding more to their plate. I think we can be smarter, looking at schedules, how do we help our kids? Providing study times and, and doing all of those things. And that's something that, that I've done, you know, back when I was in Weston, and we were exactly in the same place, and we were doing that with our primary kids. How can we make sure that our kids are not doing too many things?
Great, thank you very much.
Hi, Mr. Strauss, it's Kelly. Um, what do you expect to be your top priorities for the district in your first year for three to five years? And how would you enlist your staff to support this agenda?
So educationally, I, I have seen superintendents who come in and building principals who have come in with their agendas, and they fail because they're only their agendas. So first year, let, let's go back to the first part of the question. If I'm fortunate enough to be named, and I believe it's tomorrow night is when you are, you are naming um the superintendent. My first priority after being named, obviously, are my seniors in, in Waymouth, my staff in Waymouth, my admin team in Waymouth, and ensuring that the rest of the year goes smoothly. Our kids have gone through so much, as all of you, as students have. But with that, it really has already begun in some ways in which I've begun to build relationships in the community. I've begun to talk to multiple um, what would be community partners and, and businesses. Certainly going to, um, I've gone to two Duxbury hockey games already. I've gone to, I'll, I'll be at, at theater this weekend. It's really about It's really about connecting to people so that when we start July first officially. I've already met with all our teachers, every teacher in the district, I want to know every teacher's name and it's important to understand. Waymouth High School has a hundred and ninety seven full time faculty. Duxbury has two hundred and twenty five, I have four hundred and five adults in our building, we have twenty three hundred kids. So Waymouth High School is a city in a lot of ways, it's it's its own district. And and so the size, moving from principal to superintendent is an easy, easy situation. If I weren't here right now, I would be presenting the budget at Budgets Up. So the high school principal, we present our budget and we present it to the school committee, so it is work that, you know. I want to make it seamless as possible and that has to start with relationships. So to the first part of your question, Kelly, it would be about building relationships between now and July because once teachers are gone, they deserve to go. We have hiring to do, there are lots of interns that we have to figure out. And I certainly would want to be part of that as as part of what's going on. It's getting to know teachers, it's getting to know strengths, it's getting to know where are we? So that when day one under contract, it's not starting over. Jake, who's going to be a senior next year, doesn't deserve to start over in September. We will be seamless running into where we go. Our first year is going to be about listening, lots of listening. It's going to be about looking at data and that's going to be work that we do all summer in terms of where do we have some gaps. Now, I've gone through the budget, I know that we have adjustment counselors coming in. I know that there are math coaches coming in, all of those are are wonderful things, we want to make sure that we are putting our money exactly in the right places. So that come September, every learning gap, I want to make sure that our EL students, every new student to Duxbury High School. Needs a mentor, every new family needs to know what the wraparound services are in case they have questions, especially our EL kids. So so the job is to begin scaffolding now. While of course I'm I'm doing, taking care of my kids in in Waymouth. But understand, I did that going from Windsor to Gilbert, I did it from Gilbert to Waymouth and I was in two different states. And I was splitting dates, I and I wasn't even hired yet or contract contractually obligated to Waymouth. I was working in Gilbert, which is upstate Connecticut. Leaving at twelve, getting to Waymouth at two and going two to six every day and and so. I understand what the transition is so that it's smooth for staff. It's not about me, it's about making it smooth for staff, the community and our students. Our three to five year plan. You know, in reading the strategic plan and and there were lots of pieces that I absolutely loved, but a couple of things that stood out for me was. Duxbury at one time was seventeenth, I believe, in US News and World Report, went to twenty second. Duxbury is everything it needs to be to be the top rated lighthouse district in Massachusetts and that's where we're going to be. And we're going to do it not with more money, we're going to do it with some innovation, with some creativity and with a mindset that. We know how good we are and we don't need. To blow up shit, we don't need huge changes, well, we need to tweak some things, we need to get. Our our students to absolutely have opportunities that they may not have right now. So there are global learning opportunities, when I was at the Gilbert School, we did international work and and. It it's more than just, you know, having student exchanges. So I would take our Spanish students in in kindergarten, for example. And do this K through twelve in which they can take classes online, we have the infrastructure. They can do Spanish immersion classes with kids in Spain. We did it when I was at Gilbert and if we can start that, that connects DEI, it connects global interconnectedness. And it understands collaboration with people who are not living within Duxbury and that's ultimately. By the time they're seniors and Jake is getting ready to graduate high school, he is going to be so prepared for whatever is out there. So it's a consistent model of continuing excellence and just building upon what we already have.
Thank you.
All right. I think I have the next question, Mr. Strauss. Transparency and communication are important aspects of being a superintendent. And I'm wondering if you can give an example of how you'd be open and communicative in this position and ensure transparency.
I have learned from for many years of experience that communication is a two way street. And by that, I mean, I have to listen more than I talk. I may be talking a lot now, but it's transparency and communication are all about the ability to hear from people. To hear all stakeholders, to be able to have difficult conversations. One of my favorite lines in the world is really about the fact that. If we are afraid of difficult conversations, we put off short term discomfort for long term dysfunction. So we need to talk and 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 we need to hear voices and so. Communication starts i- in a number of ways, it is not reactive communication. Obviously, when there is a problem, we need to let the community know and and we need to be very transparent, we need to let this, I need to let the school committee know immediately. What's happening. But it's also about some consistency, so I know Shannon, you were at. At Waymouth for for the site visit to us. I don't know if anybody talked about it, but since I became principal in Connecticut. Every week for every week, other than Christmas week and February break. I send out a Sunday message and the Sunday message has to do with a lot of things, everything that's happening in in the school, which would then be the district. All the great things that are happening, all the day to day details that people may need to know, whether it is picture day, whether it is, you know, games. Links to addresses to to schools, all of the things that we do daily in school. But there's also going to be a communicative message of. Grace, humility, this week's happened to be what happens when people make mistakes and and the African term of Ubuntu. Which is living within grace and humility and allowing people to make mistakes. So it's about constantly informing people, but not just. The high school. People need to know what's happening, the great things that are happening in Duxbury. But it's not just parents, we need to let community members know what's happening in Duxbury. I need to go and have a conversation, not by email, at the senior center. And 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 sit down with our seniors, they're a voting block for us, so when we talk about budget, we need to make sure that we're going and talking to seniors. We need to be able to talk to as many people. So for example, when I was in Windsor and we had. Eighty percent of our students were were coming from families of color, including multiracial families. We knew a couple of things, one of the things was that we would get five thousand people at a football game and we could not get enough people coming to parent open house. Which isn't actually unusual in most districts in the country at the high school level, so what did we do? We would hold forums at the one place we knew that there would be thousands of people every weekend and that would be at the Baptist church and it was wonderful. And and we would have communication forums in which we would talk about things that were happening at the high school. We did it for the primary schools, communication. If I don't hear what people are concerned about, then we have a problem. I have an open door at the high school, I have an open door, I will have an open door as a superintendent. But I have to ensure that people feel that when they come and speak with me, that they're heard. And there has to be follow up to that, there has to be, this is, somebody comes to me and wants a program changed. If the program is tweaked, if the program is not changed, it's my responsibility to go back to you, Matt, for example, and say. We had this conversation on this date, this is what I gleaned from this, this is the decision we made and this is why. So that people not only feel as if they're heard, but that we do something with it. We're not always going to answer everybody's responses in the way they want. But we are going to allow people to feel, yes, you are heard, that's with staff and they are key in all of this. It is with parents, it is with central office, it is with school committee and maybe most importantly. With the two sitting in front of me, which are students. Because there has to be student voice, there has to be voice throughout the district, our primary students. I I listened to questions from sixth and seventh graders who blew me away with the questions that they asked, the Kristen was there. It it was fantastic, the depth, the integrity, so. It it will be a very typical, lots of forums, we will do things at night, we will do things during the day. But it will also be proactive and it will be responded to after being, after their needs are heard. That's vital.
Great, thank you, and I think Kristen has the next question.
Again, Mr. Strauss, what do you see as the role of the school committee? And what type of relationship do you think is needed to help the district be successful?
So obviously. You are responsible for answering to your constituents and and it's a very, it is a very complex job. And and a job that I have seen work wonderfully and and a marriage that I've seen work very poorly. Not because everybody wants what's best for our kids a- in every district. It's how do we communicate effectively? And how do we both learn who each other are? I mean, you need to know me, you need to know my background, you need to know how I view things. And I need to know how you view things and and so we have to understand the role of policy. Obviously, you oversee policy, you oversee budget and and what is, you know, how do I implement that? I have to know, we have to have lots of conversation, we have to have weekly meetings, I have to have a blog, so if something happens. You know, you know immediately so that you're not reading it first on Facebook, now sometimes you may read it first on Facebook. But it but in general, it's my responsibility to get you that information. But I also think that we have to have a relationship that is of trust, that is of. Trust that trickles down, so I'm the bridge for you to all the schools without question. You know, I understand that parents will call school committee first sometimes. It is my hope that in your conversation with me, I I'm not solving the problem, I'm going to the buildings and I'm saying, here was what I got. What are we going to do, can you look into this? Schools need to be able to run and so I am responsible to answer to you, obviously. I will go to staff, I'm not going to fix it because I'm not in that building, so I'm not Jim Donovan. I need to go to gym and say, okay, this is what has come to me. Find out, let's get some information, let's come up with a plan so that I can then report to school committee and it will be quick. Allowing people to wait is not ever good, it's not ever good. And so the relationship begins really this summer when when there's, you know, our our school committee retreat. And we start laying out strategic plan, we start laying out my goals and objectives for the year. I I've always said people do not have to break bread together. But we don't want to throw bread at each other either and and so we want to be able to agree to disagree. Discourse, I was a psychology teacher, a US history teacher, I love discourse, I want Jake, I want. I want Michael to be able to come into my office and say, Mr. Strauss, I'm not happy with X, Y and Z, or why did you make this decision? That is the only way this district or any district can go from wherever it is to the next level and that's what we're looking for. To continue to rise, we don't want to stay as good as we are and we're excellent. We want to rise to the top so that our kids have more opportunities, that that that's ultimately the goal. So it's a, we're never gonna, there will be times we don't agree and I want that to be okay. Shannon and and I'm sure, I know my staff really well. They will tell you that discourse is good, we're kind, we're okay, we don't fight. We don't always agree, but we are always caring for each other. And we come to good places because we all have the intent of what's best for our kids. And that would carry on here in Duxbury.
Thank you, and Jake has the next question.
Okay, hi, Mr. Strauss, so my question is a two part question and so the first part is. Can you give an example of a specific way you have engaged students and worked collaboratively with them in the past? And the second part is how would you engage and work collaboratively with students in the future?
So long before you and Michael were born, I I was teaching social justice, I was teaching, I coached. There were so many things that I did. That taught me the importance of student voice, so as I became a leader in our building. I continued to teach, so as a vice principal, I taught, as a high school principal, I taught. I came to Massachusetts, it's a little more complicated. I certainly want to, if I can find the time and and Matt, I said this at. To the union president at at our. At our meet and greet, that I would love the opportunity to co teach a middle school leadership class. Because I want to hear from students and and so. My point in all of this is student voice is nothing new to me, it drives schools. There are more students than anybody else in our building, they are the eyes and ears of what's going on, so. But student voice as silos is is not a good thing, so I say that because when you ask, can I give you one example? I came to Waymouth High School, pretty diverse place, pretty large, large school. All of our student leaders look the same. And we're pretty diverse. I did some research, there had never been an elected student of color as a as a student. Government person. I have a problem with that because then it's not student voice, so long before George Floyd, long before the horror of Breonna Taylor. Some of our students of color felt comfortable enough and said, Mr. Strauss, can we have a black student union? Absolutely. So we created within a, within the last couple of years, a black student union, a Latinx student union, a human rights coalition. And and I will get to exactly what you're asking when you hear the overarching. An Arab Alliance, our ADL, Anti Defamation League, LGBTQT plus group. A Waymouth leadership, which is really our captain's council. But the way their voices work is no one does anything without the other groups knowing, so they are talking to each other. So our human rights coalition and our black student union. Of which we have many students of color who are in athletics, for example. We changed the captain policy, how to become a captain, because they felt it was very biased. And that was student voice that drove that to change what was going on and it's changed the dynamic of our building. The conversations are much richer, the narrative is truer and we're not perfect. We certainly, you know, things happen, there's no question about it, but we are symbiotic in what we do. And I am very proud of that fact and our kids are too. So that was the first part, how will I engage the work collaboratively with students in the future? So the role of superintendent, I plan on having, and I haven't told, obviously, I haven't told any anybody, obviously, at Chandler, I'm there. But Alden, I need to have a room someplace, at the high school, I need to have a room, not to check on Mr. Donovan. But to meet with kids, I need to come to the high school to meet with students. Student advisory should not be coming to the superintendent's office, it's taking you time away from school, we need to sit down and have lunch together. We need to walk the halls and and you Jake and you Michael need to be able to tell me. We have a fantastic culinary program, I wish we had more of this, I wish we had opportunities, I wish we had more voice. I wish, because otherwise, student voice is simply, we're going to meet once a month and I'm going to hear what your problems are and what do I do with that? So I got to get into the trenches, that's why I'd love to be able to teach if the school committee lets me. Co teach so that when I have to go to meetings, there's still another teacher there. But that's really how we will start it. And then we will have, I have a principal's council now of students that come in to see me, we will do those kinds of things. But I it's really getting into your building and and beginning to bridge kids together. All right, thank you very much.
Before Michael goes with the next question, I'll just do a time reminder, we're just past the halfway mark, so we're we're in good shape in terms of questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, hi, Mr. Strauss. What does equity mean to you and how do you plan to incorporate it into the Duxbury Public School system?
So following from from, how's your year going, Michael? Good? Your school is going well? Good. A- as I said in my previous answer. I I've been a part of DEI from the beginning, way back when. And and so I I look at equity as multifaceted. It's about opportunities. It it's it's far different than equality. Which is, we provide a math class and so everybody can take it, so therefore we're being equal. It's ensuring that that everybody has what they need to be able to reach whatever it is that they need. So equity is really multifaceted in terms of, you know, you cannot talk about equity without talking about diversity and inclusion, obviously. I am the DEI district coordinator where we are. We have created an equity plan, a a one and three-year plan, and I think I sent it to you, Shannon. Which includes an equity audit in it. So we have to look at our practices. So we can talk about equity. We can talk about, I'm going to ensure that there are lots of voices in our school, but we have to look at our curriculum. And is it equitable and and is it equitable for all students? Are we ensuring that there are opportunities for everyone? And opportunities go beyond just curriculum. So for example, on Sunday, assuming it doesn't snow too much. Our unified basketball team is playing the first ever unified game at the Boston Garden, at TD North, TD Garden, against Hingham. That is an opportunity that we started when we brought in Unified Sports. So we have to ensure that our special education kids are are getting opportunities that they haven't gotten in the past. It's not just about ensuring IEPs, it's ensuring that they have access to programs. That policies are in place to ensure that things are equitable across the board. That everyone is more than given a chance, but is given what they are needed to succeed. That's really the truest definition of equity. Which is a little bit different than what we all think about when we think about equality. We have to ensure that it is a building that is safe for everyone. Emotionally safe, obviously physically safe, but it is a place where my needs, as I'm a I'm a parent of a special education son. And I have to ensure that his needs, his educational needs are being met in that school. They're very different than yours, Jake, or yours, Mike. So I have to focus on you. I also have to focus on him. That's equity. It's not, we're going to create this one program and everybody will fit into it. So it's really i- i- it is some personalized learning. We need to shift structures. We need to shift curriculum. So our kids, for example, in in Waymouth have such a good relationship with our teachers that our kids are starting to look at curriculum to determine whether or not it is equitable. What is missing in curriculum from their lens, from their narratives? And it's been very powerful. We've added classes for it. We're gonna have our first women of color literature class. We're going to have, we have a voices class this year, which is for our marginalized kids. But we also in our childcare are going to to start adding courses for handling special needs students. And and so we're trying to do everything we can to be as global as we can, which is really what equity is all about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my second question, how do you collaborate with your leadership team to navigate different opinions or approaches?
So I am very proud of the fact that I've been a principal for two two leadership teams. Every one of those people stayed except for one. Nope, except for two. And they went on to to other positions. But our teams have stayed together because they, again, going back to Jake's question, they have voice. And and going back, Matt, to your question, you know, about communication. We have conversation. It is not a top-down. I I'm smart enough to know what I don't know. And and so using coaching analogy, and I coached for years, if if you watch, and I don't know who knows football and who doesn't. But if you look at coaches, for example. Bill Belichick does not talk to his team much during a game. He is offensive coordinators, defensive coordinators, special teams people, all of them are part of the puzzle. I look at my role, and I said this, Julia, in in our search committee. I look at the role of superintendent, principal as the orchestra leader. Now by that I mean. I don't write the music, I don't play the music. We have an agenda together that we come up with as a team. The teachers write it, the teachers play it, the deans carry out evaluation, I do evaluation, we all have a piece to it. My responsibility is to make sure everything's harmonious. So our deans are very different, personality-wise, for example. My AP and I are very, very different. But we sit at the table and talk through on boards, what is the best decision for our kids? I'm gonna give you an example. I mean, I know you didn't ask for one, Kristen, but I'm gonna give one anyway. I think it it makes sense. I know that Duxbury did not have midterm exams this year. And that may have made you happy, it may not have made you happy. Every district is different and that's really important, and I'm not coming in with an agenda. This is what we did at any school I've been at. We weren't sure what to do. First of all, we're so big, we were really concerned about COVID cases and makeups and all of those other things. So I went to our staff, our our, I was very much in a, we shouldn't have exams. Social emotionally, there were a lot of reasons, makeups, all that. Our deans were split, our AP was split. So I went to our staff and we put out a survey and they were 100%, I I don't want to say that, 95%, yes, we should have exams. So then we, as the team, sat down and made a decision that we would do 45-minute exams. That if teachers wanted to do a second part for, which would start in term three, we would do it the way I expressed it in terms of on Monday, it would be ELA. On Tuesday, it would be social studies. On Wednesday, it would be Wednesday. So that we could take care of our kids. And then if they needed to make up because they were out for COVID purposes, they could make it up in a 45-minute block, which is the length of our classes. We were very concerned if they had 90-minute tests and they missed them during exams, it would come back into term three and start missing other classes to make up exams. So the point of that is, we heard what was said, going back to your question, Matt, about transparency and communication. We listened to what was the majority. We listened to our students who said, we can't take 90-minute exams, we're not, we're not in that place. And we found an incredibly positive way to get an assessment and to have kids feel as if their knowledge was going to be seen without stressing them out too much. And our teachers feeling that this makes sense to them. So um I I think I was against it and I think it turned out fantastic.
All right. My second question, Mr. Strauss, is a little wordy, so bear with me. You find yourself in a challenging position, like interviewing virtually over Zoom. You find yourself in a challenging position, for example, advocating for a controversial new initiative, responding to a complex situation, or proposing budget reallocations in response to fiscal limitations. And the school committee and parents are divided on the issue. You strongly believe your plan of action will be highly beneficial to students. What steps would you take to promote your plan?
So I didn't think that that was that wordy. So
Okay, good.
The word, um. Many years ago. I studied under a gentleman named Glenn Singleton, who created a a program and is, it's very famous today, called Courageous Conversations. At the time, it was courageous conversations on race, then it became race and gender, gender equity, then it became sexual orientation. But the one caveat that we all took from it was, this is about every difficult conversation. And how do you have them? There are effective ways to have them, there are ineffective ways to have them. So if we are going to put this to the school committee. I better darn well have done my homework, first of all. I better have done my research. Thrusting something upon people, I wouldn't do it to my staff, I wouldn't do it to students, I wouldn't do it to parents, and I certainly wouldn't do it to any of you. So I'm going to make the assumption that we've done all of our network in terms of the data, in terms of seeing it in action elsewhere. So that I can come back and begin to be the conduit, if you will, to why we think this is right. And then bring in, why are you opposed? So I've seen it fail miserably when people tried to put in math programs and they didn't talk to the parents about it in primary levels. They just said, we're doing a new program. And a lack of communication is the single biggest problem in any initiative. A lack of firm data, a lack of really being able to show, how does this help our students? How is this gonna help Jake and Michael and every other peer that they have? Or how is it gonna help our primary students read more effectively? I mean, I I I heard the question, one of the parents asked a question at the forum about Lucy Cawkins and third grade reading. You know, I I heard it and I know exactly where she's coming from because clearly she's not feeling that that is the most effective program. So for me to simply wipe her away and say, nope, this is what we have, that doesn't work. My job, everyone's not going to be happy. You know, the famous line is, if you want to be popular, sell ice cream. So i- i- it's not about that. It it's really about doing your due diligence, knowing why it's important. Why is this initiative so important for our kids? Talking, if possible, depending on the grade level, talking with students or talking with staff. Because if staff doesn't have a buy-in, it's not gonna work in in any way, shape, or form. Having communication and when I speak with parents, it's not, this is what I'm doing. It's, this is what we're thinking. What do you think? And why not? And give them time. Don't, don't have a forum that we are going to change a math program. Explain why and then go run into the school committee and say, okay, I had my form. It it can't work that way. It's, this is what we're thinking. Come back at our next forum and tell us what you're thinking. So that we can then create the proper program. Is everyone gonna be happy? No. That that that's the reality in the world. And that's, you know, my shoulders have to be strong enough to accept that and I and I do. But it will be open, it will be transparent, going back to your question, which I think is ironic, Matt, that those were your two questions, because it's really the same thing. It it's, how do we talk about it? My way is not the highway. And I could hear things from parents that I may never have thought of. You know, in in our admin team, our central admin team in our our district admin team have to be able to be on board with things. And 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 go through every reason why it works. It took us two and a half days as an admin team to decide what we were gonna do with midterms. And that was a pretty simple solution. But we wanted to see it from every single angle and that's the way good decisions are made. Did we still have some parents who were upset? Yes. Did we have some kids who wanted to just go to school all day? Yes, I get that. But as a whole, it it ended up being far more effective.
Very good, thank you. And I think Kelly has the next question.
Thanks, Matt. Okay, I do. Name a professional failure, describe the situation, and what you learned from it.
Just one?
That's for you.
So I I actually look at failures two ways. The most powerful scene in a movie from an educational lens that I've ever seen, from an educational lens, is from Schindler's List. When, at the end of the movie, Oscar Schindler and everything that he did, I understand that. And and but there were, he saved a lot of people. And at the end, as he was, as as the Americans were coming in to to arrest him, he said to his his accountant, as he spun his ring around his finger, I could have saved four more. So every student who isn't successful is a failure. And I don't mean A+, I mean, social emotionally, suicidal ideations. We can't find the right, you know, academic prescription to get them on the right path. We didn't have the right pathway. They dropped out, they weren't happy. Now, if they dropped out and went to night school, which we have, we haven't even in high school, I don't necessarily look at that as a failure. We have lots of questions, but I don't necessarily look at that as a failure. So I I, so that's the global educator in me. The one example that I I will give you was the first hire I ever made as principal at the Gilbert School. There was an opening for a VP. And I came from a social studies background. One of the VPs came from an English background. So the commonality is, we need somebody with math and science background. So we put together a committee, I had barely met our staff. And they put forward, I was on the committee. They put forward their first choice was a person with an English background. They just liked her connection, they liked her connection with kids. It was in my mind that I need science. Our science scores were terrible, our math scores, we needed to improve. We had this international program coming where kids were gonna be taking multi-variable calc, we had work to do. So it was my first hire. And my gut told me one thing and my head told me another. And I made the mistake of listening to my head. And my head was, we needed science. So I went against what the rest of the committee did. I was the first one to say, this is the person I want. Then the rest of the committee, these teachers don't know me, staff doesn't know me. They kind of followed my lead because they didn't want to anger the principal. And we hired the science person. It backfired. I brought everybody back and I said, what did we do wrong? By that time, we had built relationships and they said, you went first. And I realized that I am the least important person in a hiring committee. I need to hear everybody else's voice. And if the committee felt unanimously, other than me, that this is the person, that's who we needed to go with. And we would work out the rest. I have never made that mistake again. I am always the last person to give my opinion on on a candidate. And we have had almost 100% success rate in everybody that we've hired. Which to me may be the most important job of a principal and a superintendent, is hiring the right staff for our kids.
Julie, I just want to give the 10-minute notice. I think we're right on target, but just, just in fairness, just.
Okay, this is the last question, so. You're in, you're in the home stretch. Resources are always a hurdle. But given your understanding of Duxbury's municipal financial position, what one thing, one change or one initiative would you propose that you believe would have the most positive and lasting transformational impact for children in the Duxbury Public Schools?
So I'm torn between ensuring personalized learning, but I started with the idea that I don't know the jobs that our kids are going to be looking at in 10 years. So I'm gonna continue down that path. Duxbury has the infrastructure in in terms of technology. What I would create, and it's actually not incredibly expensive because we did it at the Gilbert School, is we would create, and I started to talk about it with our kindergarteners and 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 Spanish immersion classes, is we would create opportunities for all of our students using technology to take courses around the world with like-minded peers. So take, take engineering classes, and I don't know what you want to study, Jake or or Michael, but the the idea that take engineering courses with kids from Italy or China. Take, and and their high school courses that that are accredited. Take courses in eighth grade on leadership, on drawing. Take our fourth grade music kids in our choirs and have them connect with choirs from Africa. Because if we're gonna talk about DEI, if we're gonna talk about global opportunities, unless our climate changes in Duxbury, we have to go out to the world. we have to go out to the world. Our kids need to be able to go around the world. That's what true education is. And, and so we can provide that because we have the infrastructure, because we have the technology in which we could get a choir class, and we did this at the Gilbert School, we would have our seventh grade choir singing alongside of a choir in Afri- in South Africa, and it was the most beautiful, touching thing I've ever seen. And, and what did that do for our ninety-seven percent of our kids who were white in, eh, at the Gilbert School? It gave them an opportunity to see other schools, it gave them an opportunity to meet with students, it gave them an opportunity, like our Mandarin students at the Gilbert School were fantastic students. And then when we brought in international kids, obviously there were kids who could speak Mandarin, but in the beginning, they were taking Mandarin classes in China. And, and so they had the opportunity to speak with native speakers. I want our Spanish students, our, our German students, our Latin students to, Latin's a little different, to, to speak globally on a regular basis. And the best way to do that is with the technology we already have. So, so that would be, I think, one. And it's really not pie in the sky because it's not incredibly expensive, it's a lot of phone calls and connection. But that, that I think would then help our kids, whatever path they took by the time they left Duxbury High School.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. I think I'm on time, actually.
You, you absolutely are on time, well done, Mr. Strauss. Um, so now it's your opportunity to ask questions, if you'd like.
So I mean, I, I'm an educator, so, and I actually said this to, to Julia's group. Um, there are a hundred thousand questions that I, I could ask. Um, I've learned an awful lot walking down Powder, Powder Point Bridge wi- with my son um, and, and talking to people in the community. I've learned a lot about what Duxbury is all about, its history, um. Obviously, this is the most important decision you make. This is not a decision that's about checking boxes. Um, I am a lifetime educator who has seen everything. I was sixteen miles, a very long run, from Sandy Hook, where we had seven of our teachers who had babies in that school. Thankfully, nothing happened to them, but I've seen disaster, I've seen major situations. Um, uh, I, I was teaching in Connecticut and, and, you know, nine eleven in Connecticut are, are connected in, in far too many ways. Um, and so I saw what that devastation did. There are two kinds, in my opinion, of superintendents. There are leaders and there are managers. The closest thing, in my opinion, to a superintendent of schools is a high school principal because we're both CEOs and we oversee everything. And, um, so I guess my question for you really is, what are you looking, I, I read the superintendent profile survey from, from the community. What are you as school committee and as two vitally important voices as students looking for in your next superintendent?
Kelly, please.
So thank you for all your answers. Um, and I just want to, this is kind of, my question is coming from a lot of your responses and from our questions. Um, you are referencing a lot of really, um, worldly situations, you have a lot of, um, urban public experience. So I think for us, I know the two things in Duxbury, I've been on to hire a couple of other, um, superintendents, it's parents in Duxbury want experience and they wanna be heard. So the most important thing, I think, is I'm looking for someone that has a vision, has, um, a strong personality, right? And is able to weave those qualities in with a community that's not very diverse, that's very focused on rigor and sports and music, right? And, 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 um, I guess you'd say we want to preserve our community the way it is. So that, you know, and I don't know if anybody wants to chime in. Um, but, but this is a very, you're right, this is the biggest decision we can make.
I welcome. I, I welcome other members, Kristen.
I was just gonna say, I think it all comes back to the kids always and at the end of the day, it's about them. So I'm looking for somebody that has, like Kelly said, a clear vision that's gonna help our children through the interrupted learning that they've experienced, through the, any emotional trauma that has gone on over these two years, and really help them be the best person they can be, and also allow them to get some back, some school experience back. Jake, being a junior, has lost almost all of his high school experience to COVID. So I just wanna make sure that these high schoolers have a true experience of what high school was. And I just want a superintendent that is strong enough to really lead the district and to not only think about what we need to fix, but really maximize what really makes Duxbury an amazing place. I'm a transplant, I came here, I'm not born and bred in Duxbury. And I think Duxbury is amazing. Um, I think this, we're very fortunate to have the schools we do. And I just wanna have a leader in position that can really help us flourish and really capitalize and help these kids be the best they can be.
Great. Anybody else like to? Okay. Uh, yeah, and, and for, for me, Mr. Strauss, I think it's, um, you know, we have the, somebody who can, um, navigate a lot of, um, different stakeholders, uh, with different opinions. Um, lead the school and, um, excellence in all areas. Um, I, I think our, um, we're at a point where the, um, the strategic plan needs to be updated, but I still think there are several items in there that are still, um, guiding beacons for the, for the school district. Um, I think those are, when you look to that, those are still topics priority. Um, and, um, and then another big area for our town, which we talk about a lot in school committee, is, um, navigating the, the, the finances and the budget and the, um, and, uh, pulling that piece together in a little bit of a difficult environment in the town, so. I don't know, I saw that, I think that, hopefully that answers, gives some idea of what we're thinking about as individuals. Yeah, but I think the, the, the piece pulled together by the Collin Center has a lot of community input to it, so I think that has the broadest, um, and probably most accurate, uh, perspective as the community, what the community is looking for.
So that, that's really, I mean, as I said, there are a million questions I could ask, but, but I'll leave it at that one.
Okay. Would you like to share any closing thoughts, things that you'd like to share with us that you haven't yet?
Sure, absolutely. So, um, I wanna reference back, Kelly, to your, your statement about my experiences. Um, a- as I said, if you were to, you know, as we all do as, as human beings now, Google Weston, Connecticut, which is where I got my foundation, my dad was a teacher for forty-four years in Fairfield, Connecticut, which is where I grew up. Um, s- again, a town very similar to Duxbury. Um, you will see that, that I was raised in, in my first eleven years as a teacher in maybe the most high-profile district, not only in Connecticut, but nationally. And, and so rigor, accountability, um, parent communication, um, while also coaching, teaching, leading student activities, um, and being a district director of SEL, long before it was SEL, um, has been the springboard to everything that I've done since. Um, my experience in Nagatuck and EL School, in, in a lot of ways, forty percent. Um, I, everything that I've done has been very purposeful so that when I lead a district, there's no one left for me not to understand their path. Um, and, and that is vital, it, it allows all of our voices. I have a son who is a bundle of joy, he's just love, that's all he is. Um, cognitively disabled, physically disabled, um, will never go to college, will never live on his own, can't write, can't pick up a pen and write on his own, but i- if any of you said to him, play any song, he could play it on P, uh, he could play it on a drums flume. Where that God gift came from, I don't know. But what it's taught me is the s- broad spectrum of what education's all about. And, and so, um, success is success and leadership is leadership. I had tremendous success in Weston, we moved the school in Nagatuck. Windsor, where I became VP, we moved, you saw our scores, how they moved. Um, w- we took Gilbert, which was broken, and turned it into a US News and World Report School of the Year. Um, students were coming from all over the world to go there. Waymouth, we have raised scores in a lot of ways, we still have lots of work to do. So my point is, every place that I've been in, we have never remained status quo, we have become exceptional. I know Shannon spoke with our staff, I have no idea what they said, but I know that they said that they were led. Everybody has a voice in our building, everybody's always had a voice, we lead, I lead with grace and humility. Um, everything in our building, and everything in my entire career, has been about relationships. Relationships with parents, relationships with students, relationships with staff. The, the old book, one of my favorite books in the world, if you don't, if you don't feed the teachers, they'll just, they'll eat the kids. And, and the point is, if staff is not happy, and I don't mean getting everything they want, but if staff is not heard, they are going to be gon- become disruntled and leave. Our teachers in any of the districts that I've led aren't leaving, they're staying. A- and they've gone through some difficult times, obviously, everybody has. But they're staying, some are retiring, but people aren't going to find greener pastures in, in some interesting places. And so that, to me, is what leadership is, we lead from the heart. Um, we, we take in where everybody is, but I have pretty strong shoulders and, and we have faced some real adversities and, and, um, we have to provide opportunities for our kids in Duxbury globally, without changing the demographics of our town. Um, because for our kids to be successful as Fortune 500, you know, company chairman or chairwomen, we have to know that they've worked with lots of different people and not, not face it when they first get to college. Because the studies have shown the difficulty of that. So I'm really excited about this opportunity. Um, you know, I've coached and I looked through a coaching lens, I know what's happened over the last eighteen months. Um, I can tell you that making decisions is not difficult for me, but I also don't make decisions haphazardly. But I also, as, as, I, I use the term orchestra leader, I know everything that's happening in our building. Um, I meant, a- and Shannon, again, I'm sure parents said it, I meant everything. To be visible means you know what's happening within your, within your building and your district. So I will be at STEM fairs in, in second grade, poetry readings in third grade. We will be at all of that, that's not my vocation, it's my advocacy, it's all I know. And my relationship with CPAC is outstanding. My relationship with some fractured groups in our town have come together and I'm not afraid to have those hard conversations, yet bring them in a very peaceful, calm, positive way. We had, we had a, uh, the first ever community forum on anti-racism and anti-hate in a community that did not wanna have it. Um, and there were a thousand people there. Um, and I, I stood up as a white male, having no problems having the conversation. And we've moved our community, we've moved every community we've been in, because it's about what our kids need. And, and as long as we are focused on the why, which is why we got into education and why is this good for kids, I firmly believe I'm the right fit, um, for everything that you're looking for to move Duxbury to become the lighthouse. Not, not great to be the, um, wh- when we Google Duxbury, I wanna be Googling how fantastic the district is. Not some, something that happened a year and a half ago. So I look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Strauss, greatly appreciate your, your time here and, and all that you've put through in the process. And, and, um, as you know, we'll be deliberating tomorrow evening.
Great, I appreciate it, thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So, um, I think we need to.
Thank you.
So I believe with that, that we can, um, uh, need to do a, a motion to adjourn the meeting, because that was, we covered our meeting agenda for the evening.
I move that we adjourn our meeting.
Okay.
Okay, we have to do a roll.
Can I just?
Oh, yeah.
After question, tomorrow at six o'clock, same Zoom link, or are we gonna get a new one?
It's an excellent question. I believe our Duxbury Public Schools person will know the answer to that.
Same link.
Okay, perfect.
Yep.
So see everybody tomorrow at six o'clock on Zoom, same link.
Yes, so I'll go back to my trash folder and put it back in. Um, okay, so we have the motion standing.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead, Michael.
Is that something Jake and I'll be going to tomorrow or no?
Yeah, absolutely, we'd love to hear your opinions, for sure, yep.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Um, is that good? Everybody's good? Okay, all right, so I think the motion is still standing, so I'll do a roll call vote, Julia.
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Have a good evening, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.